All right. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk. Please call the role to establish forum. Madam Clerk.
We just need one minute to start the video stream, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor's staff is ready if you want to call the meeting to order at 5:34.
I'll do it again. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, the Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk. Please call the role to establish forum.
Vice Mayor Ashby. May have a conflict this evening. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Harris is joining us now. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Shenir.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera is expected momentarily. Councilmember Jennings.
I am here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes, I'm here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Let us begin with the land acknowledgement and the pledge, and then I'll make a couple opening comments and turn it over here. All right. Councilmember Jennings. Sir.
It's my pleasure, Mayor.
Would you mind leaving a land acknowledgement and the pledge? Thank you.
Would everyone please rise? For the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and the tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, the Southern Mabu Valley and Plains Miwok, the Patwin-Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Pledge of allegiance, please. Everyone, please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. First of all, to the members of the public, especially young people out there, we apologize for being late. This meeting was scheduled for five, but our afternoon meeting, which started at two, ran over to about 5:25. And so we took a very short break, but your time is important. And we're sorry that we delayed you, but tonight is a very special night. The annual Summer at City Hall presentations. And Councilmember Shenir, I know you traditionally have sort of led this presentation. If you'd like to do that tonight, you would be welcome. Otherwise, I can, I can, you know, continue my iron hand here in, in, in chairing the meeting whenever you want.
I'm happy for you to continue doing that. Just want to thank all of the young people and their families for being here tonight and for, or for watching, however that, that looks. And also a huge thank you to our staff who has really taken this program. This is either our 12th year, 11th or 12th year, and we've probably run 1,000 young people through this to the point where I have, I have young people coming back to me after college and saying, I was in Summer at City Hall. And it really meant a lot to me. So with that, Mayor, I'm happy to turn it back over to you. And hopefully I'd like to make some comments at the end of the evening.
Of course, of course, of course. So how should we proceed? Is Ms. Wimberly here?
Yeah.
Wimberly, who is an outstanding public servant, outstanding, who, you know, has run this program for so many years and such skilled dedication. I just can't say enough, and you're not even retiring. So I, so why don't you introduce us here?
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you for those kind words, councilmembers and city manager and staff that we have here tonight. We're still trying to get in some of our participants in here as panel members. So bear with me as I'm sending some names to our clerk. But tonight, we're really excited to be here. I know this is an annual thing, and we actually were chuckling earlier when we didn't have a meeting that was dedicated to our Summer at City Hall presentations. And I think we had one meeting where we actually were in person and we waited two and a half hours for the students to come in and do their presentations. So we're excited just to even have the fact that there is a dedicated evening session for us to do the presentations. But I want to move us forward. And this year for the Summer at City Hall program, we actually had a hybrid program to where we did virtual activities with our students. But we also had in-person. While you guys were on your break, we actually were in City Hall. And every Friday, we have been in-person at City Hall, learning about how local government works. We've had various guest speakers. Some of you have actually were part of this year's sessions. And we were excited to actually be able to do an in-person graduation this coming Thursday. And so we're excited to be here tonight. But I would like to introduce our, our first group. I would like to ask that Rhonda Patterson, who is our program supervisor, she's going to lead us through our presentations tonight and have our students get ready to present Summer at City Hall 2022.
Well, good, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Manager Chan, councilmembers and guests. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. As Chris said, I'm Rhonda Patterson. I'm the program supervisor for Summer at City Hall. I will be introducing you tonight to each of the six Summer at City Hall presentations. And we will begin our lead crew presentations with Keter Kids.
Okay, well, thank you to Mayor Steinberg, councilmembers, and Mr. City Manager for having us today. My name is Supriya Patel, and I am representing the Keter Kids in this presentation. I am from District One, and I go to Endurcom High School.
My name is Winter Salona. I go to Health Professions High School, and I reside in District Four.
Hello, my name is Xavier Ariaga. I go to John F. Kennedy High School, and I reside in District Five.
My name is Ying Shilang, and I go to John F. Kennedy High School. I also reside in District Eight.
I live in District Eight, and I go to McLeach. We have two other members who aren't here with us today, Tuya and Josiah.
So today, we are here to call attention to the issue of domestic violence because unfortunately, this isn't just a very pressing issue within our city, but it's also an issue around the country. So we have a policy proposal to help combat this as part of our Project City Hall project. So the Keter Kids proposes that the city launch a public awareness campaign to share resources with both victims of domestic violence and with advocates. So we have created a website called SACDVresources.card.co, which includes information regarding hotlines, legal assistance, shelters, and educational resources. So as part of our project, we have created a PSA, a billboard concept, a social media call to action, and as mentioned earlier, a website. So we are going to start off by sharing our PSA. Hi, my name is Supriya, and I am a member of the Keter Kids team. And our Project City Hall project concerns domestic violence and domestic violence prevention.
Domestic violence is the act of violent or aggressive behavior within homes, typically involving the violent physical or mental abuse of a spouse or partner.
In a interview with an anonymous licensed attorney, violence in households affect people not only physically, but can also be the cause of several mental health issues such as depression, anxiety, and PTSD. Young children in these abusive households can also develop the same physical and mental issues, a detriment to early emotional development.
In Sacramento, domestic violence has increased drastically throughout the years and is now a pressing issue that needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Promoting support for those going through difficult times is crucial. Normalizing nonviolent communicative and problem solving in relationships is a step in the right direction towards violence prevention.
The Keter Kids propose that the city launches a public awareness campaign to share important resources with victims of domestic violence.
Those who are victims of domestic violence deserve the support they need, which is why we have compiled a list of accessible resources on our website.
Together as a community, we could raise awareness and prevent domestic violence. Always remember, it's okay to get help. Thank you for watching.
Now we have our billboard. For our billboard, we chose purple as the main color for the background and for one of our characters. Purple is the color for domestic violence awareness, so that's why we chose it as the color for one, to show she is struggling with domestic violence in her life. The other person on our billboard is blue to represent stability because blue is the color of stability and reliability. So the picture is representing a victim going to a trusted person for help. On our billboard, we have our website and a hotline that you can text to receive help. You need help. Thank you.
Now it's time for the social media call to action. Hi, guys. Winter here, a member of the Keter Kids, a group of teens working to bring domestic violence awareness and prevention. Today, I want to go over the different ways you can do to help stop domestic violence. Please take into consideration that this video may trigger certain viewers. If you see domestic violence in general or any type of physical abuse occurring, you can call 911 and notify the police and give a description of the situation. Another way would be if you personally know the person, let them know about our page. We provide the phone numbers of multiple resources the victim can use to help themselves, and if they have them, they're children. Violence is never the key to a healthy relationship. It's okay to get help. Follow us on TikTok, and please leave a like on this video to help spread awareness. Thank you.
And now for our website. We have created a website called SACDVresources.card.co, giving valuable resources such as legal assistance and hotlines for those who experience domestic violence all over the Sacramento area. The website also offers educational resources that can be used in learning environments and could help stop domestic violence, including warning signs, supports, and statistics.
This project is important because it is estimated that 10 million people are affected by domestic violence every year.
But of course, we shouldn't lose hope. Together, we can fight domestic violence. Thank you so much for your time.
Now we open it up for questions or comments.
All right. Members, are there questions or comments? I mean, this is, I'll say, this is such an important topic and such an important public service because by virtue of what you've done, by definition, you will probably save lives. That's power. That is power. I hope you feel that power. Your creativity and the way you put that together and the fact that you are making it easier for victims of domestic violence to be able to access help. It's really powerful. So thank you. You have a lot of power.
So, so do you, Daryl, and you also have three councilmembers who want to speak.
I didn't see.
Yes.
Go ahead. I retract. No, I don't retract.
No, no, no. You said exactly the right thing. I, I just want to say I really appreciate you, you, you all coming at it from different angles. So both the P, well, the PSA plus social media plus the billboard plus the website. So you're really thinking comprehensively about how to reach people. I think that's great. I think you guys did a great job.
Yeah, I'll go next. Just wanted first, just wanted to say congratulations to the 12th graduating class Summer at City Hall. I just want to give a shout out really quickly to Chris, Rhonda, and just all our amazing city staff and school district just throughout our city for participating. And I just want to give a shout out. Thank you, staff, for always inviting me to come and speak to this cohort. I'm looking forward to being part of the graduation. But to the main point, presentation number one, Supriya, Winter, Xavier, Ying Shing, and Zee just want to give a shout out. You know, it's really brave to present and be here on the virtual dais. So y'all did a really great job. I had a moment to take a snapshot of the QR code that was during the presentation and checked out the website on my cellphone, mobile friendly, which is great. But I just wanted to say, great job. I mean, this is a really important topic, and we know that especially during the pandemic, there's been an increase in DV in our city and across the nation. And so thank you so much for bringing attention to this issue. I just want to share that I love the website. It's like a one-stop shop. You know, I was thinking, you know, community organizations have been doing this work with our survivors, and many of them are already listed in your website. So this is like a one-stop shop. And, you know, I'm going to be pushing out my newsletter next week, and I'll make sure to link this website and give a shout out to all of you and share it with all the people on my, on my newsletter list serve. So just wanted to say congratulations. Great job, and I'm really, really proud of each and every one of you.
So Mayor, I'll jump in real quick.
Yeah, of course.
Good. Hey, I, I just wanted to let you know I was really, really proud of all of you and taking such, taking on such a, an important topic. You know, it's a really, really important topic, and, you know, most, most youth may not have taken on this kind of a topic, but you took it on, and not only did you take it on, you knocked it out of the park. I mean, absolutely knocked it out of the park. When I think about all the different resources that you have available, that you made available to people who may be experiencing domestic violence, you gave them every venue to be able to reach out and get help. And you gave them the message that's so important, it's okay to get help. You know, that's like permission to, to eat ice cream and cake and ice cream all over again, right? It's okay to eat lots of ice cream and lots of cake. You let them know it's okay to get help. And so I was really, and then the colors, like you even focused on the blue and the purple. You went into such detail as those calming colors and also colors that, that means stability and purple that means domestic violence. You got the colors right. You did everything. So when I think about the entire presentation, you, you guys knocked it out of the park. You worked together as a team, and the acronym TEAM stands for Together Everyone Achieve More. You absolutely did that. You achieved more because each one of you took your role, you took it seriously, and you did a great job. So I couldn't have been more proud of you. Just wanted to let you know. Oh, I did want to know one thing. How did you come up with the Keter Kids team? Like, what, what, what's that name represent?
Um, so Keter means crown, I think it was in Hebrew. I can't remember exactly what it is. So basically, we're the Crown Kids.
Oh, and that's absolutely the case because you knocked it, I mean, you did such a great job. You, you're fit for a crown. So each, each and every one of you should get your own crown for the great job that you did.
Hey, I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Washington here. How many, how many summers have you done this? He keeps coming back year after year.
Uh, this is the seventh, seventh summer.
Great. And where, where are you teaching right now?
Hiram Johnson, Hiram Johnson High School.
Still at Hiram. Good for you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are we ready to move on to the next presentation?
Yes, we are.
Let's go.
Thank everyone for your kind words. And our next presentation will come from Team Huggetree.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, city clerk, city manager, and members of the city council. We face many injustices in our world today. And us interns of this year's 2022 Summer at City Hall are tackling the one injustice that has a potential to ruin our planet. Hi, my name is Asher Hernandez. I reside in District Three, and I am currently attending Grandian High School, and this is our team.
Hi, my name is Ava Vizidzide. I reside in District Three, and I'm currently attending Atomas High School.
Hi, my name is Emmy Lee. I reside in District One, and I am currently attending Endurcom High School.
Hi, my name is James Yang. I reside in District Five, and I'm currently attending the School of Engineering and Sciences.
Hi, my name is Kayleen Nguyen. I reside in District Seven, and I'm currently attending John F. Kennedy High School.
Hi, my name is Mahir Kathyal. I reside in District One. I'm currently attending Endurcom High School.
Hi, my name is Tristan Jeffers. I reside in District Five, and I'm currently attending American Legion High School.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to the youth of today. We are Team Huggetree, and over the course of this program, we have worked on developing our project on recycling and composting. Sacramento represents California, and we, the community, must set examples to implement changes. Through interviews with professionals, we learned how important sustainable waste disposal can be to reduce the impact of climate change. Through surveys, we learned that many people did not know how to properly recycle or compost. Some didn't even know about the new composting program in Sacramento, SB 1383. A major part of our project is to spread more awareness and education about composting and recycling, such as what items go into which bin, as well as provide people with more access to resources. We want to ensure that more people can recycle and compost in the city, impacting the environment in a positive way. We'll now present our PSA.
Welcome, Player One. The year is 2022. Our earth is heating up and overflowing with human-inflicted pollution. We're running out of time. How will we clean up the mess we made? Play this video game to learn one way we can right our wrongs.
Stop. What are you doing?
I'm just trying to throw away my trash.
But that's not all trash. You can recycle or compost it.
Why would I want to do that?
Do you want to live in a world filled with trash? If you only throw away your garbage in a trash can, then all of our food waste will go to the landfill. Well, your fruit can become nutrients and fertilizer, or your plastic bottle can become another bottle of water.
But how would I even compost or recycle when there aren't any recycling or composting bins inside?
That's why we need to contact your local government and ask them to put more composting and recycling bins in public places.
How much do you actually know about your trash? About nine million tons of non-recycled plastic ends up in global oceans and beaches. By recycling plastic, we help by making sure less waste is littered or added to landfills. Same with composting. In fact, when organic food waste gets dumped into landfills, it releases methane as it decomposes. Methane is a short-lived climate pollutant. Although it only lasts for a short time in the atmosphere, it traps lots of heat. However, by repurposing our organic waste through the new composting program in Sacramento, we give back to our land, reduce the amount of waste in landfills, and keep short-lived climate pollutants out of the atmosphere.
Okay, so now there's new bins, but how do I sort my trash?
That's an excellent question. Any food waste, such as your banana peel, can be put into the composting bin. You can also compost food colored magazines.
What about my plastic water bottle?
Materials made out of plastic, glass, or cardboard go into the recycling bin. But make sure they have a symbol on the back that shows that it can be recycled.
I know that food waste goes into the compost, and recyclable materials go into the recycling. But I still have leftover trash. What do I do with this?
Unfortunately, not all of our trash can be recycled or composted. Trash, like wrappers and plastic bags, need to go into the trash bin, then the landfill.
If some of my trash is already going into the landfill, then why should I even bother to compost or recycle in the first place?
Because even though our landfills are still getting filled, we can do what we can in our power to reduce the amount of food waste and recyclable waste. If more people like you recycle and compost, we will all live in a clearer, healthier world. And always remember, think outside the bin. Thank you for playing Think Outside the Bin with Team Huggetree. See you next time.
Thank you for watching. Now I'd like to pass it on to James Yang to explain our billboard.
Thank you, Mahir. Hello again. My name is James Yang, and I'll be talking about our billboard. Our billboard includes a close look of a water bottle in the midst of the ocean, since it's not properly disposed of. A water bottle as such would possibly take hundreds of years to decompose. We decided to use this image to show the harsh effects that we are causing when we don't recycle or compost properly and efficiently. Our slogan in our billboard is Think Outside the Bin. Our goal with this slogan was to encourage people to choose more environmentally friendly actions, such as throwing away trash in a way that reuses their waste. Now I'd like to pass it on to Emmy and Tristan to talk about the data that we've collected.
Thank you, James. Hello, my name is Tristan Jeffers.
And my name is Emmy Lee. We got the following pieces of information from interviews, the California Museum's National Geographic Planet or Plastic Exhibit, and peer surveys.
Over five trillion pieces of plastic are currently in our oceans all over the world. Seventy-three percent of plastic trash is found on international beaches. Nine million tons of plastic are in the ocean annually. Our composting program has a goal to reduce pollution and toxic greenhouse gases by 20% in 2025.
In a survey that we sent out to our peers, we asked, how often do you see recycling and composting bins around the city? Fifty-nine point nine percent saw some recycling or composting bins. Nineteen percent saw very few. Another nineteen percent saw various, and 2.5% saw no recycling or composting bins. We also asked our peers if they knew where their nearest recycling centers were. While 53.2% said that they did, an entire 46.8% said that they did not. This survey was a vital part to gaining information about our topic because we wanted to amplify and listen to the voices of our youth. Now I'd like to pass it on to Ava and Ashley to walk us through our solutions.
Thank you, Emmy. Hello, everybody. I shall introduce myself once again. My name is Ava, and I am here with Ashley to discuss Team Huggetree's solutions. Starting off, we'd like to use funds to cover our expenses with, and with every order of recycling and composting bins, the consumer receives a laminated paper informing them what product should be recycled, as well as how to properly clean containers to avoid unrecyclable recyclables.
The reasoning behind our plan is to further help spread Sacramento's Zero Waste by 2025 Plan. It's clear that recycling and reducing waste works. Therefore, if each individual played their part, we'd be building better habits within ourselves to achieve this goal. Now I'd like to pass it on to Kayleen to explain our social media call to action.
Thank you, Ashley and Ava. Hello again. My name is Kayleen Nguyen, and we made our social media call to action to reach the youth about composting and recycling throughout the community in a quick way. Here it is.
Did you know that nine million tons of plastic washes up on our beaches and oceans every year? We have to stop this and help save our planet. By recycling items such as plastic glasses, hardboard into a recycling bin, these items then get used into everyday things we remake. By putting items such as food waste and food soil napkins in a composting bin, they end up in landfills which help degrade our soil. By doing these procedures, we can help save our planet one step at a time.
If we don't take action now, the damages that are done will be irreversible. That's why we all need to start recycling and composting to make a positive impact in our world. We can also reduce current problems such as climate change and pollution with recycling and composting. With your help, we can make our community a healthier place.
With your help, we can make our community a healthier place.
We hope that more recycling and composting bins can be placed around the city and more education, awareness, and accessibility will be spread about this topic so everyone receives information on what they can and can't recycle and compost. We will make a change for our environment for the better. This concludes our presentation. Thank you all so much for taking your time to listen. And always remember, think outside the bin. We will now accept any questions and our comments.
Alright, I'm, I'm happy to start again. I, I thought you guys did a really good job. I like the fact that you did a lot of education um behind what the problem is and how we've gotten there. And then also advocacy on this is, these are the things that you can do. So, great job. We need you. I don't know where Howard Chan is, but our city manager, I think, is still on here. So you can pitch him on, oh, there's Mario, can pitch him on more recycling and composting bins around the city. Mario, what do you think?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Definitely a great idea and we'll take it up with the, with the rest of the team. These are always good topics and good food for thought uh that can help us lead us in the right direction. Thank you.
Councilor Machinare, can I go next?
Absolutely.
Okay, Team Hugatree, Ashley, Ava, Emmy, James, Kayleen, Mahir, and Tristan, just want to say great job. Uh, love your presentation. Uh, really love the branding, "Think Outside the Box," the bin, not the box. Uh, super cool and catchy. Um, as you know, the city is also implementing our new organic waste recycling program. So this is really great and perfect timing. Um, you know, I'm just thinking as the city moves forward on branding, uh, we might borrow your, uh, your campaign um branding, "Think Outside the Bin." I love it. Um, something I also just want to share is I really love the PSA because it was like video game focused. Um, for a moment there when I was watching, I thought it was going to be like an interactive piece, uh, PSA. Cause you know those Netflix movie where you like, what scene do you want to do next, right? So I thought we were going there, but it's still really cool, super awesome. And the last comment I just want to say is congratulations on getting seventy-nine responses for your survey. That's pretty impressive because sometimes when we do district surveys, we don't get that many responses. So just wanted to say great job on that as well. And overall, just great presentation. Really proud of each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, you okay? If I go?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so your timing could not be better. I'm gonna tell you why. I had six grandkids for the last three weeks at our house and they were throwing trash, recycle, compost. They were throwing them everywhere. They couldn't, they couldn't figure it out. So we sat down with them and did the best we could to try to, I needed your presentation three weeks ago so that we could do a better job of getting them to understand. But they ended up getting it. That's the great thing about it. They ended up getting it and these kids are four, four, five, six, seven, eight, right? So they're really, really young, but they got it and they started understanding it. And they start filling the compost bin up and the recycle bin and the trash bin. And it was their job every single day to make sure things got in the right place. And so everything that you did today helped them to understand what are the right things to do and put in the right places. So I really was happy with your presentation today because we can use that, as, as Councilmember Bang said, we can use that to send a message every single month to our, all of Sacramento on what is the right thing, what's the next best thing to do that they need to learn about whether you recycle, whether you compost it, or whether you put it in the trash. We can do that. So we can steal your idea if it's okay with you guys.
No, definitely, definitely.
Yeah.
Cool, cool.
Definitely, that is what we want. We want everyone to have better habits.
That's right. And you said that too, is if, if everybody, if each individual plays their role, then we make our whole community a lot better. So you got the message across and great job. I'm just proud of all of you.
Hey, anybody else? Jamie, can we get you to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Jamie Weatherson. I'm, this year I taught at Sutter Middle School. This is my second year doing Summer at City Hall and I just, all the students were so amazing. Of course, I'm partial to my group because I think that they're extra amazing, but it's a such, it's been such a great summer.
Great, thank you. Okay, great, Rhonda?
Oh, here I am. Well, Team Hugatree, great job. Thank you everyone for your comments. And we will be bringing our next group up, up to present is Team Rocket.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adida Rupri. I reside in District One and I attend Intercom High School.
Hi, my name is Adonis Bray. I reside in District Six and I attend New Technology High School.
Hello, my name is Harmony Tora. I reside in District Two and I attend Flannan High School.
Hello, my name is Isabella Banter. I reside in District Four and I attend CK McLatchy High School.
Hello, my name is Jade Ju. I reside in District Five and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Hello, my name is Rochamard Dole. I reside in District One and attend Intercom High School.
Hello, my name is Teresa Ju. I reside in District Eight and I attend West Campus High School.
Good evening, City Council, City Clerk, City Manager Chan, and Mayor Steinberg. Thank you so much for listening to us today. Once again, my name is Harmony Tora and I reside in District Two. We are Team Rocket and our topic is focused on bringing awareness to climate change while demonstrating a probable call to action. Our presentation incorporates the plans of the city as well as suggests what its citizens can do to achieve a more sustainable and renewable future.
Hello, I'm Jade Ju. The theme of our presentation suggests that solar-powered vehicles be a viable solution to combat the growing rate of greenhouse gas emissions. As transportation is a leading sector of not only, not only our cities, but the state's issue in feeling the climate crisis, we are here to demonstrate a means I'll protect the city from its detrimental effects. Given our plans and that we're the role model, as a capital of the state, we can make a change against climate change. Being the next generation that'll empower the city, I encourage you all to support our goal in rethinking everyday energy. We'll now be presenting our PSA.
Sacramento, the city of trees, is lost in crisis as we speak. Climate change is a natural shift in an environment's weather and temperatures. Though in recent years, human activities have negatively impacted the rate of global warming. Leading contributors are transportation and energy. As of 2019, transportation is responsible for forty-one percent of carbon emissions in California.
As a collective, we can make a change against climate change by aligning our ethics both individually and corporately.
Our plan is an extension of Sacramento's lead on on California's 2030 Zero Carbon Plan. By targeting the intersection of energy and transportation carbon emissions, utilizing the city's resources of sustainable renewable energy is vital.
Um, my opinion on climate change is it's up to us as a community to fix it and tackle the problem together. We can't do it alone.
Climate change is a worldwide problem that I feel a lot of people aren't very informed about. Like, I don't mean personally, I don't know much about climate change. I know that it's real and I know that it's affecting everywhere in all different types and ways.
Climate change is a prevalent issue in today's society and we need to take action before too much damage is done and it's irreversible.
Um, I think climate change is a serious issue right now. It's progressively getting worse and you can actually see the consequences so far in the Sacramento region.
You can help support our clean energy vision. So those are things that are really simple. If you have email, you can get your bill emailed to you instead of receiving a paper copy. Uh, but there are other things that you can do, like trying, you know, opting to take the bus or walk instead of driving to the store down the street. Uh, we recognize that those aren't possible for everyone. Um, everyone's sort of commitment to a clean power city will look a little bit different. Uh, and so we have online resources. Um, and then we have our Clean Power Champions that will go out into the community and talk to people about uh our Zero Carbon Plan. We'll also be passing out swag. Um, and so we're doing our best to sort of meet the community where they're at.
Renewable energy is a source of power derived from natural resources that cannot be depleted over time. Reusable energy creates, strengthens, and powers communities to become self-sufficient and eco-friendly. If the mission to solar panel Sacramento public transit isn't acted on today, the community will face harmful damages. Public transportation's fuel to greenhouse gas emissions greatly contributes to air pollution and thus the damages of air quality, citizens' health, and the community's geography.
Our plan focuses on making solar panel installments more accessible and empowering Sacramento public transit with solar powered energy.
Hello, City Council. I'm Adida Rupri. Um, again, in a survey our team conducted towards our peers at Summer at City Hall and at home, we found that of eighty-six responses, over seventy-four percent do not actively take part in fighting against climate change. By issuing our plan to the general public, we can ensure that each individual has an opportunity in rethinking their, their energy choices. Although we can't generalize the statistics to the city's population, it does reveal the current standpoint we are at with civically engaged students lacking such awareness. Implementing our plan casts a foreground to accommodating sustainable habits over traditional harmful habits such as driving. I will now present our social media call to action. As we can see, this TikTok is a general synopsis of the discussion we bring up in our PSA. We simplify the fundamentals of the climate change crisis while pointing out its pros and cons. We hope you enjoyed our social media call to action and I will pass the mic to Rich to present our billboard.
Hello again. I am Richard Mardell and will be presenting the details of our billboard. The capacity of our entire city becomes an audience as it demonstrates why citizens, families, and travelers are able to rethink everyday energy. It holds a pathos appeal as it calls on highway drivers to reflect on the hazardous emissions of their car comparison to riding solar-powered public transportation. We focus on the use of solar because it is the most practical and environmentally friendly method of reducing negative effects, including greenhouse gas emissions and irregular temperatures, our main cause to reduce climate change. Specifically, solar energy displaces fossil fuels by using a clean and abundant renewable source of energy from the sun that will greatly impact our atmosphere and the health of our community. The billboard shows simplicity and making a change by the simplicity of what it takes to rethink everyday energy. I will now pass the mic back to Harmony.
The vitality and rethinking everyday energy becomes crucial as we evolve into a future of cleanliness, empowerment, and revolutionary customs. Are You Today presents to you a viable means that will support the city's goals of recreation and sustainability and ultimately make a self-sufficient Sacramento with solar-powered public transit. Thank you for listening to our presentation. Any questions and or comments?
I'll, I'll go. Um, Team Rocket, right? Is that correct? Okay, cool. So it's, I think it's Adina, Harmony, Isabella, Jay, Rich, and Teresa. Like, uh, great job. Uh, really love your presentation. I think what I liked most about um your presentation was that you actually recorded some youth that talked about that they're not even sure about what climate change is. Um, I think just being really honest and vulnerable and talking about, you know, where do I start is the first thing that we need to do to really create change. Um, really love that. Again, um, also eighty-six responses on your survey. Super impressive. Um, but I think you also shared that sixty percent of folks that responded to your survey hadn't taken any productive steps. So that means we have a long way to go to really do behavior change. Um, overall, I thought it was a really great presentation and just really, really proud of each and every one of you. Great job.
Rick, you want to go? Nope. Yep.
Alright, appreciate your message on um rethinking energy choices every single day. And you know, you, you made up some points that I thought were really uh relevant in my men, opinion of email instead of a paper, you know, or electronic files or, you know, doing those kind of things. Get rid of the paper and do more emails. Walk instead of riding, uh, uh, driving in a car or, or, or take a bus instead of, uh, of driving your own car. Uh, but the key message that I thought you hound, you pounded uh through the TikTok, through the social media, everything was rethink renewable energy every single day. And I think if you just keep pounding that message, people will start getting it and really start understanding it a little bit better as far as what do they have to do to become a Team Rocket? Become a part of your team, Team Rocket, and then go to the moon, you know, or go wherever they want to go. But at the same time, they're affecting climate change in a positive way. So I, I, I'm glad to have heard you today. I'm proud of each and every one of you. And without question, I want to be on Team Rocket. I just, I want my space on your team. So hopefully you'll accept me.
And you, you want Rick on your team, believe me. So I, I just want to say I really liked the message. I agree with Rick. It was very simple, very straightforward. Kept coming at us with, with simple solutions that can make a big difference. So I, I'm really proud of you all. Uh, it's a huge, important topic and thank you for that. And let me uh turn to Kim and see if she'll introduce herself. And how many years have you been doing this?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. This is also my seventh year, um, as with Mr. Washington, and I also teach at Hiram Johnson. I, I would like to also mention something happened and their billboard wasn't shown, but they also had a website and it was a very simple message with the billboard. So hopefully if you come to graduation, you'll, oh, look at that, right on cue. There's your website. Or there, there's their billboard and there is a website that um has resources. And so they made it really simple, just like their message.
No, that's great. Thank you. Thank you guys. Great job.
Okay, I had a quick comment. It's okay. Um, I can't see you all anymore. Oh, there you are. Hi. Um, and it's great to see you. I appreciate Adonis's background the best, I think. Sorry, I wish I was there. Um, that's a good island photo background. Um, I want to say that I, I really appreciated some of the comments you all made as well about how you didn't know what the cause of climate change was and what you've done by like identifying transportation and energy is make it something that people understand. Like when you flip on the light, like do you need to have the light on right now? Is it bright enough with the windows? You know, just rethinking those day-to-day choices. I found it'd be really helpful in that way, even though your asks were very specific on solar. I actually thought, found my mind going, yeah, what about some of these other choices even beyond what you just asked in terms of little day-to-day things we could be doing. So I really appreciated that demystifying you did of what's causing climate change and really making it clear that, that we all have a role in, in doing something about it. All these little actions add up to big actions. Um, and so I just wanted to add that in um as well. Not many people know that the biggest source is transportation and energy. So like kudos to you all um for naming that um and making sure that the public is aware. That's really awesome.
That's great. Great.
Councilmember Valenzuela, thanks for that point because I realize I turned my light off because I have enough natural light. I don't need to have my light on. So your point caused me to change my behavior and that's what we want to do every single day is rethink about uh renewable energy.
Great. Thank you guys. Rhonda?
Alright, so good evening, City Council. My name is Maria Vida Smedal and I am the Summer at City Hall Program Coordinator. Uh, this evening, I will be introducing the next presentation, but before that, I would like to take a minute to give a big shout out to our 2022 Summer at City Hall returning youth, known as the Dumbledore's Army. And they are Ashlyn Bracamonte, Brandon Palufo, Emmy Bailey, Jennifer Chan, Malik Powell, Tia Janee Harris, and Tiffany Shan. We are so thankful for having you as part of our 2022 Summer at City Hall family. Your commitment, support, and dedication to our program is highly appreciated. Your leadership and guidance are an essential part of this program. Thank you so much. And now I would like to introduce our next topic, Saving the Stray Animals, presented by the Team the Anomalies.
I'm just screen sharing right now. Okay, can everyone see the first slide? Am I good to go?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Kamara Morley. I reside in District Eight and I attend CK McLatchy High School.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jayla Brown. I go to John F. Kennedy High School and reside in District Seven.
Hello, my name is Julia Ossuna Moreno. I go to McLatchy High School and I reside in District Eight. Hello, everyone. My name is Ikra. I go to John F. Kennedy High School and I reside in District Eight.
Hello, my name is Shengavu. I attend Grant Ian High School and I reside in District Two.
Hello, my name is Henry Track. I go to Hiram Johnson High School and I reside in District Six.
Today, we want to bring up the animal, the topic of animal safety through stray animals. Animal safety and stray animals are a huge issue in Sacramento, especially in the summer as it is their reproducing season. Being stray does not only affect the animals, but also the people in the community. As often stray animals come with rabies and other safety-related issues. As often stray animals come with rabies and other safety-related issues. Next slide, please.
Over the years in Sacramento, the number of strays has drastically increased. With the number of strays, shelters have become overcrowded. This has led to shelter employees becoming overwhelmed, dogs and cats becoming roadkill, and humans being endangered due to angry or defensive animals, because sometimes stray animals become defensive when encountering humans.
More stray animals in the city, the more health and safety problems they bring. Issues like rabies and other zoonotic diseases could be spread to humans. Stray dogs are often scavenged for food, causing a disturbance throughout the area. Overall, communities don't feel very positive when they see dead strays and other stray animals roaming around the streets. Next slide, please.
The three major animal shelters in Sacramento are Front Street Animal Shelter, Bradshaw Animal Shelter, and Happy Tail Animal Sanctuary. Next slide, please.
We can help these animals by trying to look for their owners before turning them into shelters or city care, getting them sprayed, neutered, and not getting a pet if you're not responsible.
We would like to introduce you to our PSA video.
Hey, guys. It's Jayla and Juju. Today, we're here to talk about the program Strays Off the Streets. Strays Off the Streets is a program dedicated to help get strays off the streets in Sacramento. We may only just have and right now, but we're working on big goals in the future. Not only have me and Jayla decided to raise awareness for this issue, but so have a few friends of ours. Now, let's go say hello.
I'm Henry. Do you like animals? Because I do.
Hi, my name is Kamora Morley, and I am so happy to be here with you guys. Um, if you're ready to share the video.
Hi, my name is Sheng Gavu, and it's nice to meet you guys and I am so glad that we're working on such important issues.
And since this is such a public matter, we decided to go out and conduct a public interview. On to the interview. What area or district of Sacramento are you in?
District Seven.
Uh, I'm from the Little Town area.
How often do you see stray animals?
I see stray animals sometimes.
Pretty often. I see a lot around my school.
How does seeing stray animals make you feel?
It makes me feel really gross. Uh, it makes me pretty sad to see them, um, out in this weather where it's really hot and they don't have any shelter and also like other types of weather conditions.
Last question. How would you feel about animal cafes that would hold exstrays and further keep animals off the streets?
I think that would be a good idea, that people who like animals would like that.
I think that would be a very cute and a good way to keep animals off the street, um, and give them a good shelter.
Now that we've heard a little bit from the public, I think it's time to talk about our program, Save the Strays. Save the Strays is basically based around rehousing the animals in Sacramento. The idea we have was creating animal cafes. Animal cafes can go in more different ways, get more adoption, and get more protection. They have definitely been trending lately. More shit animal lovers in Sacramento would love the idea of animal cafes. Well, maybe if you need markets of collaboration, for sure, it'll be a hit.
Now we'll be introducing you to our social media call out.
Hey, guys. I'm Jayla. Welcome to the interview. I'm taking up this topic of animal safety because my team and I are working on solutions to solve the stray animal problem. According to Vivek, as more people are starting to go back to work, the more shelters are getting overwhelmed with the amount of animals they are keeping around. Also, the idea is making a cat cafe or an animal cafe. Animal cafes are a great way to spread animals to shops and put them back on the market for adoption. Thanks for watching, guys. I'll see you in the next video. Hey, guys. I'm Jayla. Welcome to the interview.
Now we will introduce you to our billboard. Our billboard showcases animals living in boxes because often stray animals will live wherever they can to find shelter. We also added our program name, Save the Strays, as well as our website where you can find more information about the issue.
For our proposal, we want to introduce animal cafes in the city of Sacramento. Animal cafes are typically cafe-style shops where citizens pay for drinks and enjoy being around animals. Examples of other cities having animal cafes are Lincoln, California, and San Francisco. If we can get proper veterinary care for stray animals, these animal cafes will be a great way to help keep spirits up in the city. The pictures below are examples of an animal cafe. We chose these pictures because it's a good example of how the cafes could look. It's spacious because animals need lots of space to move around and has an inviting look to it.
Animal cafes are primarily a great way for people who like animals but are unable to keep them due to finance or health reasons. Animal cafes could have a system where the animals can be put up for adoption again. Research shows that interactions with animals can reduce heart rate, increase dopamine levels, and cut down muscle tension. Further, the result of animal cafes would include better mental health throughout the city. Next slide, please.
This is our website where you can find more resources on animal shelters and stray animals. Next slide, please.
I would like to say thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Steinberg, for listening. We will now be accepting any questions or comments.
How did you guys decide on this topic? I think in the eleven or twelve years I've been watching these, this is a first.
Um, can I go ahead and take that one?
Yeah, I was gonna tell you to take it.
So basically, when we were meeting together as a group and discussing animal safety, one thing that came to all of our minds was how there are so many strays at our neighborhoods. Like, we were all telling stories of how, you know, we see strays in front of our houses around the neighborhood, sometimes even in school. So that's really where it all started.
That's great. I have a lot of strays in part of my district, so really appreciate this. Um, Mai?
Yeah, um, great job, Kamora, Jayla, Julia, Eric, Sheng Gao, and Harry. I think all of your names. Uh, great job. I really liked the one-on-one interviews. Uh, I think it would be great if y'all did more interviews instead of two. Uh, that's just like, you know, a recommendation, um, because I wanted to hear more of what folks thought. I thought I thought the three questions y'all posed is really great, but I think it would have been really great even to hear for from from more folks um, in the various districts. Um, so that's just a a a feedback. Um, and then the other piece is also, um, I did have a little hard time hearing your PSA, but I really appreciate that y'all had subtitles, so that helped. Um, and so just making sure for staff, like, making sure that, you know, y'all got the audio equipment because maybe you didn't have the audio equipment, but want to make sure that that I could hear your PSA. I was able to read the subtitles, so that was great. Just another feedback. Um, but overall, I really love the topic and really love the idea of a cafe because you could get your tea or coffee, and you also get interaction time with animals, which is super therapeutic, which is why I have a dog. Coffee, she's chilling right here by my feet. Um, and yeah, I totally could see us having, you know, more cafes throughout the city. Um, and it's also a way for people to interact and do adoption. So I think that's super cool and gonna hand over the virtual mic to Councilwoman Valenzuela because I know she has a lot to say about this as well.
Why, yes, who has two rescue dogs that I frequently call my fur children? Um, that I'm really excited that you took this topic on. And what I love about this too is if you know at Front Street, which is in my district over uh, near Broadway, they actually do this thing called Puppy Playtime because something that they find with the rescues is they need them to interact more with volunteers so that they get comfortable with people. Because if you go to adopt somebody and they're scared of you and they're in the cowering in the corner, they're less likely to have families want to adopt them and bring them home. So I see that benefit as well, which wasn't on your slide. So I just wanted to name that, that I think like in the rescue industry, socializing the animals also like super increases their risk of um, rate of adoption. And I think it could be a cool, like, funding strategy. So I actually want to recommend that you send this to Philip Zimmerman on our team because I would love to get his two cents. Obviously, the Friends of Front Street are a super ambitious, really cool volunteer group that some of you might really enjoy plugging into because like I've gotten to go to Puppy Playtime. It's quite a fun experience on Saturdays. I don't know if they do them every Saturday anymore. They were pre-COVID, but um, I think that could be a really cool way for you all to kind of take this into action a little bit too. Um, getting folks out to to volunteer over there. But this was really great, and I want to echo Councilwoman Shenier in applauding you for thinking up this topic because, um, you know, we need to do a lot more, not even just dogs and cats, right? When you go over to Bradshaw, which is in the city shelter, they've got rabbits there. And I'm like all sorts of animals that I didn't realize needed rescuing, but there you go. So thank you for taking this on. I would love to see this go to Philip and get his two cents. He's I'm sure the Friends of Front Street would love to hear this idea too.
Yeah, I just want to compliment you on taking on this subject because, um, it's it's a very important subject. I think whenever we see stray animals, all of us want to do something. But we don't always have the tools in order to be able to do something for those animals. So we walk away sometimes very disappointed because we can't do something for an animal that we see that obviously needs help. But we just, we're just not in a position to really do what we can. So it's a very important subject. And then you you brought out some very good health benefits of owning an animal. And many of those I didn't recognize, but I think I would benefit significantly from owning an animal. So I'm gonna talk to my wife tonight about uh, adopting an animal because there's a lot of health-related benefits that you made me aware of that will benefit both of us. I really liked your PSA. I liked your, um, public interviews. Uh, it was said that the sound could have been better, but you know, that's okay. We we got the message. And, um, the thing that resonated with me the most was your your BHAG, your big hairy audacious goal of, um, animal cafes. I had never heard of an animal cafe before. And so you now have allowed me to be able to go have coffee or go have tea and at the same time develop a relationship with an animal that maybe will end up in my home and help me with my health benefits. And so that that's a perfect thing. So I can go to Lincoln, California, and I can actually see um, an animal cafe there and see how it operates. And then start talking to our council about maybe bringing something like that here in Sacramento. So good job, great job, really proud of you guys. You did a great job of working together and bringing your subject to the forefront.
Kamora, did you wanna?
Yes, um, I wanted to thank you guys again for your feedback. I was unaware about the volume. Um, you know, doing things over Zoom, it is so difficult with tech. But, um, thank you guys so much for listening to, um, our proposal.
Thanks for, thanks for doing the proposal. Appreciate it. All right, Rhonda?
All right. Well, thank you. I am too an animal person, so I enjoyed that. And thank you all for all of your feedback for our uh, Team Anomalies. Next up, we're gonna have Channel Eight, and they're gonna bring us some information on vaccine campaign awareness.
Um, Brittany, try again because you're muted.
Like, we couldn't really understand you. And I just want to make sure whoever's sharing their screen shares audio too, so you might have to exit out and then reshare and click the box. So I think that's what happened on the last presentation. Malaika, did you say Brittany is not in?
Um, I said that Brittany should try again because she was muted because I saw her talking.
For some reason, Brittany is experiencing technical difficulties with her audio right now. We are unable to hear her. So if we will proceed with Chasen.
Um, hi, my name is Jocelyn Palmer. I reside in District Three, and I'm currently attending Leroy Green Academy.
Hi, my name is Elise Delia. I reside in District Seven, and I currently go to John F. Kennedy High School.
Hi, my name is Kelly Yu. I currently reside in District Eight, and I go to John F. Kennedy High School.
Um, hi, my name is Malaika Mahmood. I reside in District Three and currently am attending MP3 High School.
Hi, my name is Inarun Saiton. I reside in District Six, and I am currently attending Hiram W. Johnson High School.
Hi, my name is Yar Emmerdo. I reside in District One, and I'm currently attending Invercombe High School.
Um, we currently have one member who's not with us right now. Her name is Malia Wen, and she currently attends John F. Kennedy High School.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Manager, City Council, and City Clerk. Um, thank you for setting aside the time to listen to our presentation today. We're Channel Eight, and our topic addresses the issue of marginalized communities that are unable to receive the COVID-nineteen vaccine due to a lack of resources, transportation, or accurate information. Our goal is to increase vaccine confidence and uptake with our gathered information and interviews. Stay to the end of our presentation to hear more about our proposal to the city in order to raise the number of vaccinations within our community. Next slide, please.
Vaccines have been a controversial topic ever since their introduction to the healthcare scene, beginning with inoculation. Their controversy stems from distrust in the healthcare system, the circulation of misinformation, and the circulation of misinformation. According to covidnineteen.ca.gov, approximately a third of Sacramento residents are unvaccinated. This statistic is not only caused by uncertainty from misinformation or distrust, but also other limitations. In a survey conducted on Summer at City Hall participants, some reported having transportation difficulties, availability issues in making appointments, or parent hesitancy.
When asked, approximately half of our participants replied that they had a moderate degree of trust in the healthcare system. Twenty-six percent and twenty-nine percent reported that they were unable to discern between true or false information. And roughly thirty percent had stated that they were not receiving enough information about the COVID-nineteen vaccines. Next. As you all already know, part of our project was to create a PSA that showcases varying parts of our topic, including the including what the problem is in our community, why it's important, and how we can solve it. Our video explains all of these from our perspective and what vaccines mean in our community. So if I could play the video now, it'd be great.
Hello, everyone. This is your local Channel Eight news with an important public service announcement. With its sudden entrance three years ago, COVID-nineteen has rocked the world and forever changed the way we live.
As the vaccine emerged just as quickly as its respective illness, which has been a major reason for hesitation in getting vaccinated. The community needs to keep pushing for a community solution. We need immunity for the community. Thirty-one point nine percent of Sacramentoans still do not have their COVID-nineteen vaccine. And one of the reasons is vaccines and vaccine information in disadvantaged and marginalized groups aren't as accessible, especially when it comes to online resources.
According to Priti Atrick, Dr. Emily Lane, she noted that she regularly sees these children who have contracted specifically COVID-nineteen.
Vaccines help protect yourselves, people around you, your loved ones, and many more. How would it feel to know that we do have the resources towards preventing illnesses and you didn't take advantage of it or didn't even know about it?
Lack of representation in the youth community can create a divide between the future of our community and our adults. Educating Sacramento's youth is the key to creating productive adults.
A direct example of teen advocacy is the Summer at City Hall program. There are many other opportunities for teens to share their opinions on how to improve the community if they're continued to be given the right resources.
Our efforts towards the vaccine awareness campaign has not yet reached a desired effect. Each individual district of Sacramento will have to revamp and improve their current vaccine programs to target the issues we previously spoke on by adjusting funding towards public health to increase Sacramento's percentage of vaccinated people, which is just one way of relief.
Serving community needs in order to become vaccinated is what we advocate for as the Sacramento general population demands their voices to be heard. However, Channel Eight wants to take a step towards the future and integrate vaccine information as a requirement in schools of Sacramento. One of our team's largest concerns is social media-presented COVID information can be a leading cause of political views being shifted in opposition of the vaccine. As a response to this, Channel Eight strives to push for more vaccine-positive videos, articles, and overall media.
Take action now. We can't wait any longer for our problems to be solved. It's time to push the limits to support our community and all those within it by supporting immunity for the community. It's time to push the limits to support our community and all those within it by supporting immunity for the community.
Alright, uh, can you hear me now? Next. Okay, we will now be presenting our billboard. Once again, as seen earlier, our slogan is immunity for the community, meaning that it is not only essential for ourselves, but to, for those who, who we interact and care for every day to be vaccinated and protected from the COVID pandemic. It acts as a reminder to look out for your friends, families, family and neighbors, no matter what the age, gender, or ethnicity. To simply do what's right to return our world back to how it used to be and for the better.
Next slide please. Now onto the social media video. This social media call to action video is meant to help destroy misinformation about vaccines and to promote the truth behind the practicality of this vaccine. Just for a little clarification, our video is about a court scene between the accused who is spreading misinformation on the COVID vaccine and someone who was pro-vaccine. Please play the video.
Court is now in session. The accused may now be heard.
The vaccine is fake. Everything about it is useless. I won't be trusting this government item and be putting it in my kids and myself.
Your honor, may I ask you? No, sit back down now. The accused continues.
I will not be trusting this vaccine and I will continue to retaliate against his absurd campaigns with this stuff.
You may now start. Everything you said now, up until this point, has been completely wrong. The COVID vaccine is helping a lot of people around the world, including myself from getting sick.
But?
Silence. Continue. The vaccine is not useless nor fake. Ask the millions of people who have the vaccine, including myself. It's better to get the vaccine so you can keep yourself, not only for yourself, but other people from getting sick and getting caught.
Thank you. I understand now.
Thank you for understanding. With both parties coming to an agreement, I hope that everyone continues to get vaccinated.
Um, next slide. One thing that we need to understand about vaccines is that we will never have a 100% vaccination rate in Sacramento, but it is something that we can strive for. In order to raise this presented, we must target the problem at the source. For those who don't already know, the city of Sacramento has already implemented methods and resources to combat barriers and limitations through the county's Department of Health Services website. Regarding the misinformation around vaccines, the Public Good Project, which is a nonprofit organization, has been using a tracking system that monitors any misinformation about vaccines. It emphasizes on the importance of spreading accurate information. Next slide please.
Ultimately, Channel Eight is taking a different approach by looking out for our future generations. So here's our proposal. We ask of you, the city council, to integrate and make vaccine education a requirement in Sacramento schools. We believe that teaching and building health literacy among students will encourage and assist them in choosing for themselves what information to believe or debunk and whether or not to get the vaccine. Although it is not a solution that our city can immediately integrate, it is a potential curriculum worth considering in order to have immunity for the community and to establish greater connections with the brilliant minds of the future. Next slide please. We just want to thank you for your time and for listening to our presentation. Please feel free to let us know if you have any questions, comments, or concerns.
I'll take one. Can I, Mr. Shanier? Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, this is a brilliant idea. This is uh, going right into the schools and trying to work with the kids. But let me ask you this. Is part of your motive to um, get the young people to convince their parents who are anti-vaccination to change their minds?
Um, oh, go ahead, Joss. Oh, are you sure? Okay, okay. Um, so essentially, what we're striving for is rather than a hundred percent vaccination rate, um, we just really want the youth to have the freedom to choose what they want to do. So if they're provided the accurate information and scientific reasoning behind um, vaccines and things like that, if the youth had more freedom to choose whether or not they were um, able to take that step towards convincing their parents, um, we do believe that that is something very important and something that the city can help us with.
So you could, so you're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I, I just wanted to add on to that. Um, yes, to answer your question, this is also an effort to that. Um, personally, I've had friends um, come to me and like kind of like just ask if there was any way like we could help their parent, like help them convince their parents to get vaccinated. And you know, I kind of just sat there and just didn't really know what to think as well. Um, so I think that this project helped me, helped myself open my eyes to what we can do as youth to help other youth with um, their personal lives. And this is also just something really important in our everyday lives now as in the 21st century, just like overall. And so I think this is, this um, the idea of teaching youth and educating youth. And this can also expand to be something more educational towards other demographic um, groups with outside of youth. So that's, that's my answer.
So even if you cannot um, change every heart and mind of the young person and/or their parents, this is totally worth it because you will change some hearts and minds. Um, and I think that's really important public policy lesson. You don't not do something because you can't cure everything, right? You do it because you can, you can help as many people as possible. And that's what you're doing here. Thanks. Yeah, so unfortunately, we don't have purview over the schools. But I, I would recommend and I think either Mai or, or I can help you go talk to either your school board members or the superintendent. And you should do this presentation at the school board. And uh, let them know how you feel about this and what you think. I, I think it was a great presentation. Really timely, really appropriate at this point. Um, just proves that you all are smarter than my generation. Cause you're doing the right thing and you're all doing the right thing. So uh, just want to say congratulations and you know, for all of these billboards, uh, and I would ask Ms. Wimberly, um, I think we can put them up on the city billboard. That's over by Sac State and um, I would love to get copies of the PSAs and we will, we will run them in our newsletters. Um, we all have newsletters. I think I have about seven thousand people that it goes out to every month. Um, but we definitely want to spread this word. Really great job, guys. Mai?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation and choosing this timely topic. Um, I think it was Brittany who shared a little bit about her lived experience about having friends who asked how they could talk to their parents, right? I think as young people, you are the most important messengers to your family and parents. But oftentimes, it's also because you need the language and the education to share the importance of whatever you're passionate about, right? And I think that's something that's super powerful about your presentation. Um, I also really love the fact that you talked about um, the type of misinformation that's out there on social media. If you don't fact-check, um, I thought that was really powerful as well. And um, that education component um, is so critical. So overall, great job. Um, you know, I was also going to mention that as a city council, we don't oversee the jurisdictions for schools. Um, since you would love to mandate this uh, via, you know, in the classroom. But I still think it's an awesome policy idea and uh, would love to share it with my trustee in this area, Chinua Rowe, actually worked for the mayor. Um, but he's a school board member at Sac City Unified School District and I'm sure he would love to partner with y'all to figure out you can present this at Sac City Unified School District. So overall, great job and just really proud of each and every one of you.
Oh, is this the kids?
Anybody else?
Yeah, on, on a personal note, um, three of the council members that you're talking to today have came up the ranks to become a council member by the, being a school board member first. And so Jay Shanier, uh, Mai Bang and myself, we spent time on the school board. So we know all the people you need to contact in the school board in order to be able to have an audience to get in front of them. So we'd be more than happy to help you in any way possible. I, I just loved your presentation. Uh, the backdrop for Channel Eight, you couldn't have picked a better backdrop, right? I saw all the great mayors of the city of Sacramento in that backdrop and it made me just stand up and pay attention to it, right? But your message is really, really important and um, everything that you did today was the right message. I just loved your energy. I love your messages. Um, immunity for the community. You know, and all the time that I've heard, I haven't heard that one. Immunity for the community. And it's just, that's a, that's a powerful one. So I agree with Councilmember Shanier and Councilmember Bang. Uh, get us the information. We'll put the billboard up if we can. We'll make sure we put our, on our newsletters and get the information out. Um, you guys are a powerful voice for other young people. Uh, sometimes my kids would listen to me, but they would listen to their friends more than they listened to me. And, and, and listening to their friends, if they had heard this kind of message, this would be a message that I'd love to have a conversation with them if I had a different opinion. Um, but they would be educated. They would have accurate information. They'd be able to present their facts as to why they thought the way they thought. And so you did a great job and I'm just real proud of all of you.
Great job. Rhonda, you wanna bring our last group up?
Alright, I do. Um, but before we conclude for our evening with our last group, I just wanted to do um, some recognition of a couple of folks. And I just wanted to say thank you to Kyra Blackman, um, who was very instrumental in the development of the Career Journey Speaker Series. Um, I certainly appreciated your support and your guidance through that. Um, as well as our media team, Effra Morales and Doug Bingham. The technical support without them, we just wouldn't have been able to make that virtual work happen. So I just wanted to make sure that I recognize them and thank them publicly for their support. Um, and with that, we will be concluding our evening with our final presentation from the people.
Hello everyone, my name is Ivy Tan and I reside in District Six and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
Hello, my name is Lars Larson. I reside in District Four and I attend Rio Americana High School.
Good evening all, my name is Ariane McCullough. I reside in Out Grove and I attend C K McCauley High School.
Hello, my name is Konghei Hong. I reside in District Eight and I attend John F. Kennedy High School.
I reside in District One and I attend the Thomas High School.
Hello, my name's AJ Trin. I reside in District One and I attend Endercombe High School. Well, council members, city manager, city clerk, and Mayor Steinberg, I'm happy to be with you all today. Our group is the People and our topic is drought and water conservation. Drought has been a reoccurring issue in California for many years. Although we recently got out of the 2012 to 2016 drought, as of May 22nd, 2022, we recur to an even more intense drought. 2022 drought has shown the driest temperatures out of all the droughts in the last 128 years of Californian history. In addition, water reservoirs are at a low due to the short amount of water received from the rainfall periods during the winter of 2021. As California arrives in another dry season, it's important to understand the impact water has in regards to Sacramento as a city and California as a state. We will now share our PSA video. As we enter summer, the weather is getting drier, temperatures are rising, and drought is getting worse. Droughts have caused distress for more than 37.2 million lives in over 50 counties in California. California has suffered from three droughts in the past. First drought in California was between 1928 and 1934, setting up the basis for water reservoirs. As of May 22nd, 2022, we saw the driest year in the last 128 years of Californian history. To confront the issue, legislation and regulations have been passed to conserve water usage. Despite the efforts to confront drought, we've already seen the consequences. As an agricultural-based state, California allocates a lot of its water for farming purposes. Forty percent of California's water is dedicated to farming alone. With drought conditions worsening, the need for water in the economy is taking its toll.
According to the Public Policy Institute of California, the drought conditions in 2021 reduced the amount of land supplied with water by 5.5 million acre feet, which is about a 41% decrease. To put it to scale, one acre foot is approximately the size of a football field. In addition, the cost for pumping groundwater has increased for farmers. With the 4.2 million acre feet water increase for farmland and additional water shortages from worsening drought conditions, energy bills for farmers have risen up to $184 million. With increased costs to production, around 1.7 billion has been lost in revenue along with 14,600 jobs lost.
So what can you do? An urban community such as Sacramento's water usage may seem insignificant compared to the water usage of the agricultural and environmental industry in California. Rebates allow for customers to get some of their money back when they perform certain tasks. Various rebates have been offered to citizens such as grass conversions to more sustainable options such as artificial grass, toilet rebates, and irrigation upgrades. The average sprinkler system uses about 12 gallons of water per minute and runs for eight to 12 minutes, meaning that every use takes up 96 to 144 gallons of water. The city of Sacramento has previously incorporated seasonal schedules when utilizing watering landscapes such as sprinklers. This system provides us an option with minimal effort in order to conserve our water use. Nevertheless, most of these solutions aren't ideal for communities with insufficient funds and resources. Luckily, there are numerous easy solutions one can implement in their everyday lives in order to decrease their water usage. Here are a few easy changes anyone can implement to make a difference. One, take shorter showers. Two, don't let the faucet run while brushing your teeth. Three, don't let the faucet run while washing dishes. Four, check faucets and pipes for leaks. Five, only run laundry and dishwasher when you have full loads. And six, avoid watering. Overall, water is a very important resource that we can't take for granted. As drought continues to worsen, we need to take action and do our part in conserving water. And now we will transition to our billboard.
Our slogan, Stop the Flow, Save H2O, represents the conservation of water. We only have one earth in which we are lacking to sustain. The image depicted is earth as it's filled with water and the faucet is using up the water. And instead of use, instead of letting the water just flow down and wasting it, it is conserved in a pot. Taking steps like this to conserve water will let us create better habits and change the status of the drought. We will now be moving on to survey statistics.
Hello everyone, once again, my name is Ariane McCullough and I will be presenting our survey statistics. To further our understanding, we conducted a survey with 46 participants in communities all around Sacramento. The poll aimed to get, to gather data on the patterns of water usage. The questions we asked were, how many times do you do laundry, laundry per week? Was also this question say 32.6% of participants long, washed their clothes two times a week. Next, we asked, how many times do you flush the toilet? 34.8% said they flush the toilets five times a day. After we asked, how many ti, how many times do you wash your dishes per day? 39.1% washed them two times per day. Then we inquired, how many times do you activate your lawn sprinkler per week? 37.8% say two times per week. Subsequently, we asked, how many times do you wash your car per week? 24.9% said five times a year. Based on data gathered, we pretty much learned that most participants are moderate with their water use and practice water conservation. Now, for our final question, we asked if participants knew what water rebates are. We discovered that 91.3%, 91.3% of participants aren't aware of what water rebates are. Understanding the use of water rebates could potentially benefit a citizen in lowering their water usage and conserving water. I will now be passing it on to Lars to report our solutions.
Hidden our PSA, water rebates are a good solution for conserving water. They're both indoor and outdoor rebates that allow for citizens to gain access to water efficient utilities. We acknowledge that some people will not have access to rebates from the city. Therefore, we provided tips to conserving water. Conserving water in urban environments such as Sacramento consists of educating people about methods of conservation.
And now we will segue to our social media call to action.
What's the most common way people waste water? Long showers, running waters, and leaks for hours. Where does our wastewater even go? It flows to your community's sanitary sewer system to a water waste tree, facility system. Do little leaks in your home waste that much water? Yes, yes. Do you know how much water? The average American uses per day? From 68 liters to 45 gallons, you pay. Which state is doing the best in water conservation? Oregon. As the weather gets dryer and the sun gets hotter, questions about water conservation are on the front of our mind. In drier places such as California, residents and businesses have actually been using more water than they have in seven years. Read description, save and share. Stop the flow, save H2O.
Our social media call to action brings awareness to ways people waste water. It consists of frequent questions asked about water waste and its answers. Now I'll pass it back to Lars.
Drought becomes an increasing issue as our weather gets dryer and hotter. By promoting water rebates and water conservation methods,
By promoting water rebates and water conservation methods, we can do our part in conserving our water. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Now open up to any questions or comments.
Well, I've got a couple of comments, Mayor.
Go, 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 Jeff.
So you guys really hit the sweet spot for me as Chair of our Water Committee and someone who works on water issues every day. Uh, you know, I, I loved your presentation, especially your slogan. I think the Department of Utilities could pick that up in the graphic as well. Probably more powerful than the slogan they're using, to tell you the truth. So I think you really hit a winner there. You touched on really a lot of the points that people need to hear, that it's actually pretty easy to conserve water just by altering behaviors. Uh, one thing that you did miss about in, in water rebates is that the city of Sacramento will actually purchase a smart controller for people that will water their landscape according to the needs of the plants. It's a very powerful tool that people can use really at no cost to themselves, reduce the amount of water they spend on irrigation, which is most of the water that people use in terms of the urban environment. And most, most of the water we use in Sacramento goes to landscapes. Anyway, you brought up a lot of really great information and I congratulate you on, on bringing this to the forefront. Great job, you guys.
Thank, thank you, Jeff. May?
Yeah, I would also just echo, uh, Councilmember Harris. Really a great topic. Ivy, Lar, Ariana, Konghei, Denise, and A.J. Uh, water conservation is a really important, um, subject. Um, and I have the honor of sitting on the Water Committee with Chair Harris, uh, who chairs that committee. Um, I, what I think I love most about your presentation was just, um, the really basic tips on how to conserve water, uh, by just changing your own behaviors. Um, the other piece that you all mentioned was also, you know, sometimes, uh, folks may view that it's expensive to, to make changes in their house, um, on their lawns, um, providing them an option about, you know, rebate programs is really important, right? Oftentimes, it's about really just changing our built environment um, to be able to do water conservation. So, uh, really great job, great presentation. I'm really, really proud of each and every one of you. Great job.
Uh, Mayor Pertham Gata?
Maria.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, one, I, I wanted to again echo the same comments earlier, but one thing that I wanted to highlight how, uh, you, uh, mentioned the, that leaks, that many people forget leak, about leaks. So they, they talk about conserving water and everything, but you forget about that every day if you've got bad leaks or little leaks in your house, that's money going down outside without you even knowing. So Leak Free Sacramento, another great, um, uh, tool there. So great work, everybody. And I've got a little guy, he does great work. Well, thanks, everybody.
Terrific job on one of the most important challenges that we face as not just a city, but as a state and as a society. I mean, i- if we don't take control to conserve more and the drought continues, the, the consequence is going to be profound. And you're speaking to the heart of really, really important issue in a way that's understandable to people. And, uh, I thought it was great. Thank you. Councilmember Shanier, do you wanna bring us home here with, uh, some final? I know I've got, I've got to sign off. I just wanna thank everybody again for wonderful presentation, inspiring.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just sorry that we couldn't do all of this in person because I would love to see all of you in the chambers. Um, you, you so represent the best of Sacramento and all of its diversity and all of its intelligence and, and the drive to do better. I mean, you all hit every important issue, pretty much every important issue that we deal with. And not only did you educate us, um, but you came with solutions and, and very few people do that. Mostly, they just wanna complain. Um, but you, you didn't complain. You said, this is the problem and this is what you should do. Um, so I, I'm just really excited. I love this program. Um, I hope to come back year after year to see the graduation. I'm looking forward to your graduation on Thursday. I'll be there. But, um, I just wanna say congratulations. I hope this was worthwhile for you. I hope you learned something along the way. I hope you definitely made new friends. You know, when we started this, we put all the young people together by their school. And I love the fact that you're all interspersed with each other and, and hope you make some, you know, create some relationships here um, that lasts a long time. So just wanna say again, thank you. Uh, thank you for teaching us. Thank you for, for educating us. Uh, thank you for doing this and uh, we, we wanna watch you all because you are, you are certainly the leaders of both today and tomorrow. So thank you. And I wanna turn over my colleagues. If you wanna say any last words, otherwise we will, uh, let them go and finish the meeting.
Yeah, Jay, I just wanna kind of build on, um, your point about, um, seeing the best of them. Um, we saw the best of you today. And our goal is that one day you will sit in these seats that we sit in as council members and as city managers and as the mayor and the chair of these seats. And you'll take the same passion that you have today and bring that with you when you're sitting in these seats, making policy changes for the city that you've grown up in and that you have, have grown to love. So that's my, that's my goal for each and every one of you. You've done a great job today and, um, I'm looking forward to what tomorrow brings to each and every, every one of you.
Yeah, you, you may have to pry Rick out of his seat, but we'll, we'll help you do that. Thanks very much. And, and just a thank you to Chris and Rhonda and Maria for all the work you've done to all the returning youth. And for those who don't know, part of the program is bringing back young people from the prior year or the prior years to help plan and facilitate, really walk the walk, walk the talk around youth leadership. Um, so I wanna thank all of the returning youth as well. And, um, have a great evening and we'll see you Thursday. Do we still have, uh, Angelique or, oh, we have, we have public comments on this item? I'll go ahead and do that. Mr. Davis.
We're now taking public comments on item one.
What I wanted to say is, is congratulations to the youth that just spoke. I thought this was, uh, Matters Not on the Agenda, but I did, since they brought me in, I wanted to say congratulations to all the youth in Sacramento, not just certain sections, but just in the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Letitia Huerta. Letitia, if you'll unmute for item number one. I'm gonna move to the next person, Yessenya Landa.
And Phil, be safe. You're not muted, just so you know.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Letitia Huerta. See, Amberz?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. Um, I just, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just had a comment about the project that you guys are trying to accomplish in front of the elementary school of Garden Valley. Um, I was hoping that maybe you guys could reconsider the location of the project. I understand that the homeless shelter or hospice.
Ma'am, we're think, we're talking about Summer of City Hall student presentations right now. Do you have comments on that item?
Um, no, actually, that was, I, I think.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, why don't we let all these young people go? And you can do items on the agenda.
Thank you.
So if I could get you guys to mute your phones for someone.
Phil, you're on, you're on, you're on mute still. Phil? Thank you, Councilmember. Do you want, move on to Matters Not on the Agenda at this time?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. I don't, I don't know, is, is Angelique still here or Eric? Do you wanna run this? Do you want me to finish it up?
No, we can, we can go ahead and move on here. Madam Clerk, uh, can we go on to Matters Not on the, uh, public comment on Matters Not on the Agenda?
Thank you. So if you would like to make public comment for Matters Not on the Agenda, raise your hand now. Our first speaker is Raul Huerta.
Yes, good evening. I'm calling on behalf of South Natomas United Neighborhood Association in the South Natomas area. Our community continues to demand that our voices be heard by the city council and stop the placement of Joshua's house in front of Garden Valley Elementary School. Like our affected community, the Twin Rivers Unified School District was also not adequately involved in the decision to move forward with this proposal. And we are extremely pleased that the school district adopted a resolution opposing the placement of this project in front of our elementary school. The school district is more than willing to work with the council and the nonprofit to find a suitable location for this project, one that will not directly impact any school. We demand that the city council and the nonprofit act responsibly and work with the school district to this end. Councilmember Harris has said that he doesn't understand why our community opposes his project and why we keep asking for a park and other amenities that we already have. Recently, he pointed out parks and libraries that were available to our children. So let's be clear, the closest park to our community is a 21-minute walk. The closest library is a 42-minute walk. And the closest community center is also a 42-minute walk. I suppose Councilmember Harris doesn't mind that our kids must walk that far for amenities that should be available to them in their neighborhood. By contracts, Joshua's house is merely steps from Garden Valley School. His safe parking ground proposal on Rosencorp is only two minutes from Garden Valley School. Homeless are already being housed in two motels two minutes from the school. And the largest affordable housing development in Natomas, 300-plus units, is also within two minutes from the school. Our small community is doing more than its fair share to assist those in need. It's time for the city council to do the right thing and act responsibly, uh, for a community that has been underserved for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Letitia Huerta.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Letitia Huerta Trejo. I'm the mother of two children and I have been a neighbor for the Garden Valley School for 22 years. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Harris, you need to work with the school district and come to an agreement on a better location for Joshua's house. Councilmember Harris and the nonprofit promised that they would reach out to the community, but have not, showing how disinterested they are in the Garden Valley community. We have gathered over 600 online and paper signatures opposing Harris' proposal. Also, reviewed the close to 100 e-commerce, also in opposition. I'm so happy that Twin Rivers Unified District approved a resolution opposing Joshua's house. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis Jr. of To the Bay and Back Cheesecake, and I'm gonna close this thing out. Um, the mayor's not there, but the rest of the city council is. Um, it, last week, there was something that I've never seen. I'm, I, I don't think I've seen it since I was 18 years old, where you can receive anything without a written agreement. That even comes to a driver's license when I was 18. But I saw something last week and I'm asking the, the, um, mayor and the city council to find out how a nonprofit could receive funding. All of the paperwork I've submitted to City Hall, and it was a nonprofit that received funding without a written agreement. I would like to get in that line myself to see if I could get grant money without, uh, an agreement. And, and there's a way to check it because there's an auditor at City Hall. That's why I asked, who audits the auditor? Because I wanna find out if that's Measure U monies or ARPM funding because To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes hasn't received one penny of Measure U monies. And we have been told by the millennials that support us that we're the only black family-owned cheesecake business in Sacramento. I haven't seen that, but I know we're the only one out of Del Paso Heights, which is supposedly an underserved community. So this is a tremendous insult to our family, all the paperwork we submitted to them people down there. And then to find out, and then I did our homework on that nonprofit and of course, they're white-owned. So there are quotas down there and I've said that. There's quotas for a lot of different races, but not for black. They hold us to a double standard.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please? Thank you.
Check out how that hap-
Next speaker is Yessenya Landa.
My name is Yessenya Landa, resident of Garden Valley, but most importantly, a mother of four who attend Garden Valley, which is 20 feet across from this proposed homeless shelter. I wanna make some clarifications and I also want some answers. In the last city hall, I, city council meeting I attended, Mayor Darrell stated, this shelter needs to be done and some people will not like it. Well, let's clarify this. We, the people of this community, do like the idea of a homeless shelter, but we strongly oppose the location. This is not a very intelligent location and very careless, especially when we know there is plenty of empty lots and buildings that can be used for this project. Now my question is, is there not any empty lots or buildings for this project? Answer me, city members. The fact that community members are being prohibited to join a groundbreaking ceremony shows the exact, so, shows exactly how council member, city, uh, so, I'm sorry, shows exactly how council member Jeff Harris does not care about our community and is trying to silence the very community he is trying to put a shelter in. Let me clarify something about this groundbreaking event. Councilmember Jeff Harris misled the community by having this event on the opposite lot and not letting the community join or even notifying the community. My question is, why? What will this do to our children's mental health? Them going to school every day, knowing that the shelter that is right in front of their school is where people go to die. Would you enroll your child in this school? Also, another concern that we have is we know these homeless people will have and should have visitors. And you would be okay with your child walking to and from school, knowing there are visitors there? Twin Rivers has publicly announced and opposed the location and is willing to work with the city. Are you willing to work with the school district and the community that is being affected? City members, think about what you're doing. If something happens to our children physically or mentally, you will be held responsible and there will be a fine-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, costing you lots of money and this will also-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Raul Huerta Jr.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Raul Huerta Jr. and I'm currently in my third year at UC Davis. Ex-alumni at Garden Valley Elementary School and a neighbor of this community surrounding Garden Valley since I was born. I'm frustrated and saddened that the city is once again proposing a homeless facility in front of my former elementary school. The children of this community deserve something better, something that motivates them whenever they walk to school. For instance, a community center or some other facility that will help them become successful. The proposed project has no benefit for children. For as long as I remember, the vacant lot in front of the school have only contained trash and homeless camps. And this brings no motivation to children. When Councilmember Jeff Harris and a nonprofit held a groundbreaking event in Joshua's house, my younger brother and I were kicked out of this event, which was made private, fenced in, and security guarded the entrance. Councilmember Jeff Harris claims that the community is in favor of this project. However, he only references the select individuals and organizations that support him, not those of us who have been opposed to this project from the start. Our community was not invited to the groundbreaking event. And our number one priority is to ensure that the children of this community are provided security in and out of school. And I'm grateful that the Twin Rivers Unified School District passed a resolution opposing the placing of Joshua's house in front of our school. And I hope the city council does the right thing to work with the school district and find a proper location for the project. And I hope the city council does the right thing to work with the school district and find a proper location for the project and away from any school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is C. Ambrose.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm also talking about the project for Garden Valley. I have been a resident of North Natomas for over twenty-seven years. When I purchased my home, I was very happy to be a proud owner of a nice community where I would see my kids grow and, you know, live their school years here in a closed facility to their elementary school. I, for one, never let my children walk to school to and from. I would pick them up because I would be worrisome for my children, even at a small age. Um, I didn't know that I had to worry. At the time, there was no supermarkets or nothing in the area and it was very peaceful, quiet. Kids would play outside and there was no worrisome in the world. As time progressed, you guys, I started adding supermarkets. With that, we added more crimes, more, um, police overhead asking us to stay indoors because our children are, as we were, in danger of people running into our homes or whatever the case may be. Now you guys are proposing a housing where we would add more danger and more situations to our home. As the, the previous people had mentioned, Arthur Martinez had offered to trade the property for a more suitable location for the homeless. We agree, they need a place. They need a place where it's suitable for them, but at the same time, safe for our children. We don't want a violent situation, whether a shooting or stabbing or anything happen to our children. So if you all would be reconsiderant and think about a better location, we don't oppose to that. We just want this project not to occur across the street at heat from our children. If this was your child or your grandchild, because at this point, my kids are grown, these are my kids that live in my neighborhood. I won't, I would hate to see our kids being pulled out of a, a neighborhood by-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, my final comment is please reconsider and-
Thank you for your comments. The final speaker is Thalia Casada.
Hello. Um, good evening, everyone. I would like to make the comment on Joshua's house. And I am opposing the location of Joshua's house. Not only is it, um, inviting more homeless people to come down the area and ruin the property, ruin the safety, motivation, inspiration of the children. Um, I would sincerely appreciate it if the city council would just open their mind and open their hearts to seeing that having a homeless shelter across the street from an elementary school is not providing safety for these children, any type of motivation, any type of safety towards them. Um, Attorney Peck has a study that it's thirteen to twenty-four percent chance that elderly people escape from their nursing homes. What is the percentage of the security that is going to be held at this housing place to keep these homeless people in there? If there is that small percentage of the elderly people escaping from their nursing homes, what is the chance that a homeless person goes in and hurts the children? Goes into their, uh, schoolyard, does inappropriate things. The safety of these children is not, it's not there, i- if that home's gonna be there. Not, let alone like having supplements, medications. There's so many people that, that the homeless people are gonna want to go in there, take that medication because they need it. They're suffering from mental illnesses and having those supplements and medication in that facility right next to an elementary school is not providing that safety for the children. And it, it, it's an unsettling feeling and I hope that you all can just hear the, the ache of everybody in this community not wanting this there.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Madam Clerk, is that the last comment from the public on matters not on the agenda?
That is correct.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, let me move on, on to, uh, comments, council comments here. Are there any comments from the members of the council? I don't see anybody queued up here. Uh, Madam Clerk, I think that is the balance of our due. Do you have any appointments to read into the record before we adjourn this evening?
I do not have anything to read into the record.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, that looks like it's the balance of the agenda. Uh, we will adjourn at seven twenty-nine PM. I want to thank again all of the youth and all of our city staff and volunteers who helped out with this. And also, uh, give a lot of, a big, uh, kudos and applause to years of work by Jay, uh, Councilmember Sheneer on this effort. Thanks, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.